Okay, good afternoon. We're ready to begin this afternoon's work session. And we will follow the agenda as posted with one or two very, very slight modifications. In light of the time at, with a few of our presentations, I would ask that the administration simply share a main point that the school board really needs to hear from that particular report and then allow us to ask questions for discussion. And that's no reflection on the administration, just simply in light of the time because of our late start. We appreciate the preparation that goes into this. And respectfully so. Okay, item 3.01 is where we begin with memorandum of understanding for two of our schools in the first year of denied accreditation. Dr. King?
Chairman, Houston members of the board. 3.01 memorandum of understanding for Lake Taylor Middle School and Campustella Elementary School. Those documents should consist of three major categories. One centers on VDOE, Virginia Department of Education, and its responsibilities in supporting our plans and the work for those schools. And so you will see that outlined in Roman numeral number two. Also, number three consists of the responsibilities of the school division in terms of as it reached the following our responsibilities of Norfolk City School Board and Norfolk City Public Schools, meaning the school board in supporting from a policymaking body and understanding of the information, as well as the school division, meaning the superintendent and administration with supporting the schools to move forward as it relates to student achievement, as we've discussed. Also included will be the responsibilities for the local school level as well. So multiple categories in terms of the MOU, the memorandum of understanding. And again, it's between the Virginia Department of Ed and its responsibilities in supporting schools and the schools' plans for moving forward. In addition to the school division, which is really a governance leadership team item because it talks, it speaks to the school division, and the school board working with the superintendent and administration to support the schools. Lastly, as I recap, will be the local school level responsibility, and they're all outlined there for you. The intent is for you to have an opportunity to review these, and it should appear as an action item for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding during the regular business session. And you have an opportunity to ask other questions as well. I will add that we had opportunities to meet at the state level with our new director of the Office of School Improvement, which is Bev Rabel, along with her support staff. Also had the opportunity to meet with the new state school superintendent, Dr. Staples, as well, in terms of the procedures that we collaboratively entered into for these MOUs. I only mention that because that's different than previous years. Previous years, it was more written in stone in terms of what the items of requirements were going to be for the memorandum of understanding. So it seems that it's a movement into a more collaboration and discussion about the needs of schools. But again, that's a description of what you will find within the MOU. Any questions?
Dr. King, how many MOUs are the under the DOE right now?
Currently, I'll have to go back. Dr. Willoughby, do you know the total number?
We have two currently, one for Ruffler Middle School and another for Lindenwood Elementary.
And do those change from year to year? Do they get updated?
Yes, they, we will go back to visit with Ms. Rabel in January to update those MOUs for the schools that have been denied previously.
Okay, and are these MOUs mirroring those previous ones, or are these different in terms of their language and expectations?
The one that we received this year for Lake Taylor Middle and Campustella is different from the previous MOU.
Okay. So then it begs the question for me, if we go to under Norfolk City Public Schools' responsibilities and school responsibilities, number four, is it new that the Norfolk City School Board and Superintendent will implement professional development plans for all board members and Superintendent of pertinent central office? Is that required by the state, or are we asking that of ourselves?
That's a requirement.
Okay.
It's a responsibility of the school board and the city public school division to work collaboratively to provide a professional development plan for board members that's pertinent to the central office and which focuses on the roles and responsibilities for school improvement throughout. And so really, you know, it really amounts to what the school improvement department on a monthly basis should be reporting to the board around. But this item will allow that to be committed to paper in terms of the schedule and the sequence around which we would do so. And so, and you know, right now, if one were to enter into a review previously to determine how we did that, then it would be the agenda items that are listed monthly via the work sessions.
And then is number seven the same as it was before or new? Because I know, Dr. King, you've always gone up and generally with the chair to provide reports.
Right, it states that the superintendent will appear before the Virginia Board as requested to provide reports and answer questions.
Right.
So that's not new.
Okay.
The word may be a little bit different, but that's not new.
Okay, just curious.
You go when you're requested, yes. As a matter of fact, I should be before the state board on the 20th.
Right.
For the purpose of execution of these.
Which you'll need either Dr. Houston or one of us to go with you, right?
You know, when we receive the information and correspondence back, that could be the case.
Yeah.
So, but we will know so.
Okay. Those are all that I had on the MOU, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Stewart?
Dr. King, it's my opinion that your presentation regarding the progress made in particular by Booker T. Washington documented great progress that that school has made. It's my opinion that that documented progress as presented by you on that time should have resulted in the school board understanding the great progress is in process and a different decision on their part. And a separate point, the State Department of Education in the past, when I worked there and others did, was supposed to be of a technical assistance to local school systems. I'm very hopeful that under current leadership, that it will become more of a technical assistance rather than checking and monitoring a system and snapping, slapping hands. It's my opinion that it became that. That's just one person's opinion, but I think there's a great deal of resources there, and I hope that they can be unleashed to be helpful to us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the MOU? Rodney?
So we currently have several schools that are already involved with priority status, focus status. You are having whatever they call SGT meetings and other meetings, task and other items are in INDISTAR and so forth. Can you talk a little more about what, if anything, is different, specific to what's being required under this MOU in comparison to what we already are doing, what we have been doing, in particular with these two schools?
I really feel that if you look at section three, where it speaks to the responsibilities of the city school board and Norfolk City Public Schools, it's more specific in terms of the board's involvement with, for example, the professional development plan. And then in some areas, it talks about the school board and the superintendent working, it was the school board would direct the school superintendent and appropriate staff to meet quarterly with the Office of School Improvement to review progress of corrective action plans in quarterly. And then it gets into the areas that it says including, but not limited to, the following data points. And so that kind of clarity around student attendance, teacher attendance, grade, student discipline, student transfer data, student intervention, participation and progress by intervention type, et cetera, that's item number six. And really, the notion of the involvement of the board, based on our discussions there, this type of modification centers on the board's role in terms of governance and implications for policy that would allow us to align our activities with the strategic plan if it has not already happened. So I see that as an item that's a bit different. Outside of that, the majority of what I see here is very similar to in the past with the exception of item number eight, under Roman numeral three. Appropriate division staff will participate in aligning academic review and performance evaluation, technical assistance, and other training provided by Office of School Improvement when invited to support the implementation of strategies for low performing schools. That's called in short form ARP training. We had no ARP training in place last year, and this is something that, of course, is facilitated by the state level. Dr. Willoughby, anything outside of that reference?
No, no, just to, just to piggyback off of what you said, we, in reviewing the past MOUs and looking at this year's, it's very clear that this MOU has, we have specific responsibilities for the school board. In the past, it was more generic, but definitely tasks that were school improvement tasks to improve the schools in, on the past MOU. Nothing really additional, just points that you made.
Right, and item number 10 that follows and that under number three relates to, in my view, how we have done SGT meetings. And it speaks to the role of people that should be included in that. It talks about the Norfolk Public Schools will ensure that division team is assigned to each school. And it speaks to the various categories of people that should be a part of that collaborative discussion at the school level. So that's, those are the things that I see across the document that may be a bit different.
So just a couple of thoughts. I know last year, we attended one session up at the state when they were working on the school improvement and the role of the school board. I don't know where that is, but it seems to be somewhere we need to, I guess they're putting it on us to kind of find something like that and get in our schedule when we can do that. The other thing, I recall, I guess it was last year, watching one of the state meetings, and they were dealing with the MOU or some type of agreement with Franklin City. And there was some type of back and forth because the state board was expecting the local board to do some type of community outreach and public meeting, and there was some confusion over whether or not that had been done. I thought I saw somewhere in here where we two were being asked to collaborate with the community. So I didn't know if you had had a chance yet to have in mind how soon you think you would do that, or at some point when you think you might come back to us and let us know. Kind of putting some timelines around this once we.
So just receiving this across a few days, our plan is to move forward with an implementation rolled out, rollout for both schools. That would include that. And there is an item here that speaks to receiving input and feedback on what I refer to as action steps for the school or corrective action plan for the school and how we inform parents. And so what item is that? Did anybody see it already? It is actually.
Number two.
Number two, all right.
Oh, yeah, right.
All right, yes. Says that following our responsible, responsibilities of Norfolk City School Board and Norfolk City Public Schools, item number two, Norfolk City School Board will show evidence that the corrective action plan was shared with stakeholders and this feedback was acted upon in corrective action plan prior to being submitted to the Virginia Board of Education for approval. That speaks to the corrective action plan that must be developed after this particular MOU is adopted by the state board. So the next step following adoption by the state board would be for each school to move forward in collaboration with the school administration, the system administration to develop corrective action plan. And we must also show that we had a mechanism in place to notify parents and have a platform for discussion and receiving feedback and input for that. So as a part of that corrective action plan, that would be, that would be a component of it, major component of that. I'm just thinking that we're now, this is November, so we will quickly begin to develop the corrective action plan and a schedule for this. So any thoughts around when we would be able to start the process of input and feedback? Because we would not typically do that after we have the draft of the corrective action plan, so.
Yes, once we receive the template from the Office of School Improvement, then we will begin developing that corrective action plan, which will include, of course, essential actions from the academic review, as well as actions to, or tasks to improve the school aligned to the student performance indicators. Some of this work, I would say that I anticipate to come from that corrective action plan we started by identifying our baselines and targets for the year, setting our goals for the year, and then pulling out the school improvement tasks from the, from the INDISTAR indicator work that's, that we've been doing all along. So we would, we would take that work and align it to the template that we received and then present that to, to the VDOE and then to our stakeholders, and then bring that back to Dr. King to share with the board as well.
Just for clarity, so what we have currently with Lake Taylor and a lot of other schools that have these essential actions, those are called school improvement plans. And what we're talking about now with Lake Taylor and Campustella are called corrective action plans, is that correct?
Yes, sorry. Every school has a school improvement plan. And then, and so with this corrective action plan, we must understand that this, this verbiage is coming out of the ESEA waiver. And so when a school is denied accreditation then, a corrective action plan has to be developed. And so what I'm saying is that we would, we'll be able to take some of the tasks and work that we're doing and align it to that template that we receive, once we receive the template. And there may be other tasks added to that, but we definitely will include those essential actions, which we're calling the fundamentals that's going to move the school towards full accreditation.
Just one more for clarity, so the school improvement plans that every school has, you're talking about the school improvement plans that we do. Or are you talking about the school improvement plan that is associated with the essential action in VDOE and INDISTAR? That's what I'm trying to get some.
They're one and the same.
Okay, okay.
They're one and the same.
And so from what we've already been doing with Lake Taylor Middle and Campustella, we would pull from the work that we've been doing and add whatever other things that you are recommending into this new template, and that's what we would then monitor going forward?
Yes.
And we would prefer that we have one plan.
Right, that's what I was trying to understand.
But some difficulties sometimes will surface based on what the state might require. And so with the separate template for corrective action plan, it really should, we ought to be able to merge the tenets and the requirements of that corrective action plan into what we already have in the overall overarching plan. But that remains to be seen in terms of what the template layout might be, so.
One, I would just recommend for us to consider probably at the corrective action plan level, is how we can infuse language where we are asking the parents to be engaged in this solution. And so that we are not just asking of ourselves and of the students and the teachers, but that we're asking of our community to be involved, because I think they will be key components to enabling the success.
Thank you. Warren?
Dr. King?
Yes.
Most of our guests may have left us and the TV may not recognize, but at the end of our agenda today, we talk about master milestones planning. Of those 17 items, all of which were board actions or board's consensus over the past five years, moving to weaving into a coherent plan, I think they will clearly address this item four that's new to this item. I think they're critical. I think there will be items that the school board can take action. And it goes back to one thing that you mentioned when you first came here, the parent compacts with Mrs. Will. So there's that under partnerships. So there are items that are coming at the end of this session today that could, after processing, after you're working with your colleagues, you making recommendations of us, we making decisions as board that could be very significant in addressing these two items.
Sure, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Stuart said it more succinctly than I did, but parent compacts is what I'm intending, exactly. Thank you.
It's his words from three years.
Yeah.
So these MOUs would be on consent agenda for approval for next Wednesday, and then, of course, two things I think are important, one that we would certainly monitor, the areas of, comes under school board accountability, making sure, as Rodney mentioned, that we are getting the training that we need. I'll check in with Gina on Gina Patterson with regards to the more plans for the workshops for school board's role in school improvement. And then we'll await the corrective action plan because that'll require our adoption and approval as well. Okay, so this will be on next week's consent agenda. Okay, thank you. Our 3.02 transformation update, and let me also just add that we should also talk about how we incorporate the reports into our regular work session reports for the corrective action plan for the, plans for these two schools. Okay, transformation update, Dr. King?
Yes, Chairman Houston, members of the board. 3.02 transformation update. Item number one is open campus, followed by repurposing of Lafayette Winona and concluding with reconfiguration update. Open campus to be presented by Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. And I believe we're going to start with a short video.
Students who dropped out of high school or are behind on their credits now have a new opportunity to graduate or catch up. Norfolk Public Schools opened campus a Magic Johnson Bridgescape Academy. The division partnered with Magic Johnson Bridgescape in order to give 125 students a second chance at their education. The academy, which has morning and afternoon sessions, is helping dropouts and overage-for-grade students succeed through a unique curriculum that's specially tailored to each student. These students take two courses at a time through an online program that's proving to be very popular.
I like it because they enroll you in two classes at a time. So like, like right now, I enrolled in geometry and English. So it's like, I like, I like the way they set it up. Instead of you going to all these classes in one day, you gotta get this done in a certain time, and it's at your own pace, so I like it better.
What my favorite thing is, is that we get to work on the computer, and it's like, I get to do all the work. I don't have to just sit there and take unnecessary no's or hear unnecessary things all day long until like, we only finish like a little bit of work, but I get to do all my work.
They're making choices about what they're working on daily. While they're enrolled in two courses, today might not be a good math day. Today might be my English day, and I'm feeling more drawn to that. And so they have choices, and they've got some control over the situation.
It's the same material that they would see in a traditional classroom, but in a computerized setting. And so for many of our students who are digital natives, they love computers, they're on their phones all the time, iPods, those kinds of things, it captures their attention in a way that they wouldn't necessarily have in the same classroom.
It's not just the innovative format that has students excited. Clearly, the consistent support and encouragement from teachers who are just as enthusiastic about being here keep these students coming back.
The teachers help me out tremendously to me. Like whenever I need help, you just ask for it, and they do the best they can to help us, even if they're not really good with that subject.
The teachers and stuff, they are awesome. They are so nice. And then I have my own advisor's number, so when I'm going to be late or if I can't come, I can text her, she'll, she texts me back. I need help at home, online, she texts you back.
I feel really good about that because a lot of the teachers, just like, in regular school, they're distracted by so many students. But here, you get like really one-on-one time.
Whether they're working online at home or in the classroom, many of these students realize that open campus is providing them with what may be their last chance to receive a high school diploma.
It's important to me because I have two kids at home who I really need to step up my game and just like get my, get my life on track for them and also for myself, because after I get my diploma, I want to go to college and be a preschool or kindergarten teacher.
When I stopped going to school, people kept saying, like, you need to stop procrastinating. You need to go get your GED, you need to go get your GED. But they don't realize that I didn't want to go get it because I did not want a GED. I wanted diploma. And just to know I can come here and get it a little faster than a regular school year, it just, it means the world.
Good afternoon. To give you an update on the open campus, currently, we have 125 students being served, the 100 students that are dropouts, and the 25 students that are either overage for grade or high school behind in credits. So we are maintaining and holding to that standard that we set when we opened on the first day. Currently, our attendance is averaging on a daily basis in the 70% range, which is on the high side for a program of this kind. Students sign in daily at the entry, advisors do their own attendance as a backup, and then we monitor the progress on the E-course Edison Learning Program for every student. Currently, we have 23 students who have earned close to a half credit, basically a semester's worth of credit in just nine weeks' time. So we have students that are really working at a quick pace, and they are doing this program very accurately. We have 24 different courses with students that are students enrolled in, and those students are averaging 3.5 hours per day logged in and working. With four-hour sessions, that tells us, and we can see when they log in, that some of those hours that they're logging in are after hours. They're logging in either at home or at the library or some other location as well. So we can see the seriousness of these students in terms of wanting to complete these courses. Currently, we have one student who has completed and been awarded a half credit in earth science. So this is our first student who has credit that will now be put on her transcript. We have also started with SOLs. We have had two students who have now taken the writing SOL. So all of the state standards are being followed, all of the curriculum standards are being followed as well. We have now completed a transcript analysis for every student enrolled at open campus, and we know what each student needs to graduate. We have now moved that process to the waiting list so that we know what our waiting list students will need once they are able to begin the program. All of our students have completed Level Set Testing and achieved 3,000 to establish their baseline reading levels, and students are working in achieve 3,000 weekly to help improve their reading skills. We currently have 36 students who are identified as special education, and we are working with the homeschool special education department chairs. They are serving as our case managers and conducting IEP meetings to make sure that we're in full compliance by the December 1st headcount. With 36 students in special education, we have to have those additional supports in place, and the NPS Special Education Department, as well as the homeschools, have really stepped up to provide that support as well. In terms of next steps, you can see on the screen, it really follows along the line of the master milestones. You know, we are really looking to want to expand the number of students. The timeline has December 2014. We really want to know by this December, if possible, what our opportunities would be to expand to an evening program, to expand our waiting list, to build a budget that will help us define what the next steps would need to be to be able to expand to that evening program as well. We are looking at college and career readiness, career certifications, and we've begun discussions with a variety of different organizations to provide internships and apprenticeships, job counseling placements, and working with community and schools as well. The process for identifying an advisory board. The process for identifying an advisory board is about 50% complete at this point. We have identified a few folks that we would like to invite to the advisory board. We hope to have that process completed by the end of the month. We are looking for some dates in December so that we can have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and officially make sure that we've got the open campus kicked off in a positive way for not only our students, but our community as well. We do have a number of students that have health concerns. We have student, seven students currently that are expectant mothers, so we have identified resources, and we now have a nurse that does come to the open campus building two days a week for, I'll say, part of that day to provide some prenatal assistance and care, and we are looking to expand that if possible as well. One of our next steps is the daycare. Not only what, well, once these expectant mothers deliver, but we also have several students who have children at home currently, and we would like to be able to provide that support as well to be able to keep them in the program and graduate. We are working towards building a media center with some resources within the building and be able to provide other kinds of supports to not only the students, but to the teachers as well in terms of curriculum support. We are identifying classrooms with additional computers, and we would like to be able to purchase additional laptops that can be checked out by students so that they will have that ability to work on the e-learning program from their home environment as well. And then we have a meeting, actually, it's this week, Friday, to discuss with ODU folks about a third-party evaluation process, and we hope to have that in place shortly as well. Any questions?
This word is open here, this word is a student's name there that are taking the opportunity that open campus is allowing them to have, to have that second chance in receiving an education. And I think this is one of the bright spots that Dr. Robinson speaks about, and the more stories that we can hear about successful exiting out of open campus with a diploma, I think is something that we're definitely gonna want to highlight and be attentive to. The 10th bullet that I would like to see on this milestone piece would be what outside sources of funding you all are looking at in order to maintain the funding for this project? And I'm specifically referencing grants.
And those are being looked at as well. Just not enough information at this time to be able to report out on.
Right, right, right. But I would like for that to at least be a part of the discussion each time so that we can keep it on the table and know if we're making progress towards it or if we need to continue to look for it, et cetera.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. It's very encouraging. What did we see on the screen when we saw this large classroom with many students around computers and so forth? What was that?
That is where the students actually log on to the Edison Learning Program and they work online, you know, through the program. There was a mix of adults and students in that large room, and what you have is you have highly qualified teachers from each of the curriculum areas, so they work themselves around the room. They're advisors for a group of students, but at the same time, they know which students are logged on to which programs, so they're able to provide assistance, you know, to those students as they work through the programs in terms of curriculum questions or issues they might have. At the same time, they may pull a small group of those students at particular times to be able to fill in gaps in terms of the state curriculum and gaps that might occur within the Edison Learning curriculum.
You mentioned a figure of 70%. Would you share that with us again now?
That's roughly the daily attendance for our students.
70%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're saying that that's a very encouraging figure for this kind of...
Based on the feedback that we've received from the Magic Johnson Edison Learning folks, we're about 20 to 25% ahead of what, you know, other examples would be. We take it very seriously in terms of their attendance, and so we do have, you know, people that are making phone calls, you know, to students. Unfortunately, many of these students have, you know, circumstances that make it difficult, whether it's jobs or whether it's childcare or other kinds of issues. We try to work with them around those issues, but we are working with them to make sure that, you know, their attendance, you know, holds as best it can. Unfortunately, if their attendance doesn't hold, we have told them that we will exit them out of the program so that we can fill their slot with somebody who will attend on a daily basis.
Your waiting lists, what are the numbers on your waiting lists?
The waiting list has been as high as 44 currently. It's about 39 right now. As we work through the waiting list in terms of that transcript review and looking for, you know, basically vetting out, you know, the student's eligibility. So once we know the student's age, but once we look at their transcript, we need to know that mathematically, you know, we can, you know, achieve the goal for the student as well as for NPS in terms of being able to graduate them within the time limit that we have for them.
Does this facility have the capacity for daycare?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
I have two comments. One is kind of ironic that with all the pregnant moms there, that Coronado used to be the school for pregnant mothers, but that was lost due to budget cuts and other ways education for pregnant moms was approached. But what that begs is that we really need to provide healthcare for those pregnant moms so that their kids get a good start. I'm wondering if we could partner with EVMS or some other entity like that that could help provide, or Centerra, that could help provide some prenatal care for those moms. The daycare option is absolutely crucial for the success of this model because these kids have kids. And if we want them to succeed, we have to, they need the support to be able to do that. And the last comment is, this is a game changer for each one of those children that, for whatever reason, had to leave school and didn't succeed. And I had the pleasure of touring the school and watching the kids work. It was very impressive that you would think that this group of students that were previously didn't succeed, failed in some respect, have come back and are working diligently to get their, not just a GED, but a high school diploma and with the aspirations of going on to higher education. I think this is just a wonderful thing, and that's why we've got to be able to double the capacity as soon as we possibly can.
Warren? Just request you to consider the addition of one word to item number nine, the word research. Here's why. And Ms. Mather knows this, and Dr. Lans knows this, and you've heard it before. As we go through this, I hope we're gathering qualitative as well as quantitative data. Video data about expectations of all of us, of all the students, of all the faculty, what it is people hope to happen. And then data along the way to document progress towards that because three years from now, this will be a story. And I think interacting with our institutions of higher learning to have them help us deal with ultimately evaluation is good, but the research portion, I think, could be excellent. And it will be a success, there will be success stories, but I don't want us to focus on numbers, numerical data. I want that, but I really want qualitative data. I really want what people hope and dreams are. And then, where's Dr. Lans? Those success stories at the end will be richer because of that. Just consider the addition of the word research to evaluation.
We certainly can do that, and I can also let you know that we videotape very briefly each student as part of their enrollment in terms of trying to capture what their goals and their aspirations are in completing the program. So we'll have a beginning and an end as well.
Consider adding your instructors and your school board members and the superintendent and all those other people with their hopes of doing that. Thank you very much.
Gotcha.
I just like being on tape.
Okay.
He's thinking of a contest. He's thinking of a contest. I know there's a contest out there for that.
Thank you.
Well, good, I might be a little more conservative than others. So I'm excited about the program. I would, just some thoughts as we look at budget priorities and expansion, that, or maybe at the next update, really get a sense of what we're anticipating, when some of the students will be able to earn their diploma, you know, what type of cohort that we're looking at, what we think within the next year or two years, whatever the timeframe is around that. And I ask that in part because I like to make sure that we have everything solid and we have students that are not just successful in terms of enrolling and participating in the program, but ultimately having that outcome. And so, you know, I would just like for us to consider that before we expand so rapidly, you know, until we really have, make sure that we have everything humming along the way that we want it to hum along so that it's a, you know, very successful program for all. Likewise, in the area of internships, apprenticeships, job placement, I'm encouraged by us doing that for open campus students. I would also like for us to make sure that we are maximizing those opportunities for all of our high school students. So whether it's, you know, we have great things going on at Norfolk Technical Center where they do have a daycare there, but to the extent that we're looking at internships and apprenticeships and dual enrollment, I hope that as we look at this, we won't limit it just to, you know, the open campus program, but we try to make sure that students that we have that are currently enrolled, who may be at risk of dropping out or just may be excelling at whatever rate that they're excelling, that we provide opportunities for those students to take advantage of these things as well. So that's it.
I just wanted to briefly share that for those that were not able to come to the TIE Awards Dinner last week.
Taylor Gonzalez, who we saw in the video, actually gave a very eloquent speech about her experience, and I say this with great admiration for what she did in terms of speaking in front of that enormous strange crowd that she's not seen a soul before, other than, you know, perhaps her instructors and a few others that were at her table. But she was a remarkable story, and she told the story very well, and she was captivating the audience, and she was the only standing ovation for the whole evening. So I just wanted to highlight her because she epitomizes at the early onset of this program, a great success. So we saw her there and we saw her last week shining quite as well.
Thank you. Coleman? Thank you.
Thank you again for having me here and to give you an update on the repurposing of Lafayette Winona. Before I get started, I did want to introduce a special guest at the table who, this is Dr. Bob Sabina, who is an associate dean and the interim STEM department chair at Old Dominion University, who actually serves as the chair of the school planning and management team. And we have formed a great partnership already with Old Dominion University. They've brought over some experts to assist us. And also, before I begin, I wanted to recognize there are quite a few SPMT members that are here in the room. We had one that stepped out, but if you are on the SPMT, if you could please stand just so you could be recognized.
Thank you. Let me see if I can get this to work. There we go. I stuck with the plant theme as we continue to show you how we're growing as a group. And I'm here today very excited to give you updates. Those that have been seeing me around, I've been smiling a lot because I'm so excited about the opportunity that this school is gonna have for our students, our children in Norfolk Public Schools. And it's amazing, the work that's, the work that we've done, how far it's already gone out. I don't know if my battery is... It's just, maybe it's, there you go. The work that's already been done and the excitement that I'm already hearing. But before we get there, I just wanted to remind you about how we got started. But I did something a little bit different with this slide, and I underlined the words that the SPMT felt was the charge, what we were being asked to do with this school. And so this has been the guiding force for our work. And as I said... Okay. You want to hit it, go ahead. There you go. And as I said, the new school is becoming the talk of the town. It is the talk of the town. Just this morning, I was doing my annual physical and I was getting my blood drawn, and the nurse recognized me, and she said, "I heard you're the principal of the new school. Can you tell me about it?" And I started discussing it, and she said, "Well, I have a student who's struggling in Norfolk Schools, and I want to see if this is an opportunity for him to be able to have a different learning environment that will help him be successful." And I get a lot of that. On the soccer fields, the soccer moms are approaching me, and as well as phone calls and emails from many parents asking about this school. They are calling and there is excitement. So this is the SPMT, and what I wanted to highlight on this, this was the final names when I first presented to you, we had titles but not names. There are asterisks. I did leave off two, Dr. Savigny and Elizabeth Mather, do you have children? But everybody who has an asterisk has children in Norfolk Public Schools. And so when this group started meeting, our main focus is what is best for children? Anything that we did, we went back to whatever we do at the school, it has to be what's best for children. It's not about politics, it's not about egos, it's about our children and what they need to be successful citizens. And so the SPMT has met four times, and actually, we met more than what we thought we were gonna meet, and I'll discuss that later. But we reviewed various academic programs and with help from Old Dominion University and some research, we basically ended up focusing on two of the charges, which is an IB program and STEM, but also a new program called project-based learning. And so I'm gonna show you a video, and I'm gonna speed this up after the video because there's a lot of slides, but the video is going to tell you a little bit about project-based learning.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. ...[1774.86]
through what's called a Category 1 training as part of that. So after lots of research, and we finalized our language for our academic program, I'm not going to read this to you because you have it in front of you, but you'll see that we chose the items that we felt that was best for children. You're going to see leadership skills in there, you're going to see 21st century, you're going to see job expiration for jobs and careers that you wouldn't normally cover. We wanted to tie this to our community's economic and social needs. But there is also something interesting, which is the STEM component. And working with IB, you're going to need arts. So we changed it to STEAM, but we turned the letters around and called it TEAMS, because it is a project-based learning school, and since the students will be collaborating, that we wanted to take a TEAMS approach. And so those subject areas would be taught through project-based learning. And so this just breaks down our 3rd through 5th grade, what their experience would be at the school, and what a 6th through 8th grade experience would be. Basically the same thing, just some slight difference in preparing the students for the high school programs. And then we talked about the entrance requirements. Now, I have to say, there's this notion out there that this school is for premier students, that it's for A and B students, and that is not the case. This school is for all students. And so when we looked at that, we decided that we wanted to have entrance requirements that would not be a barrier for students to come to the school. But we also wanted to have some items that would show that we have committed students and families that want to come to this school and be part of this change and this transformation. There is a general application process. The student has to be in good standing at their current school, and student and parents will review and sign a compact. This is a new item that you'll see in schools. The teacher, the student, the parent, and the principal sign a compact, and that will be designed by the committee as well. We're asking for a character reference, and the character reference can come from anybody that's a non-relative. We've noticed in the past that that has been a barrier for students and programs, and so it could be a church leader, it could be a teacher, it could be a Boy Scout leader that just would check off a character reference for the student. And we asked for a short essay on why I want to come to this school, to be written by the student. We also want to make sure that they understand that if we exceed our enrollment, that we would have to go to a lottery system. Now, the 6th through 8th grade has all of the same requirements, except we will have an interview process. And then you'll see that there's language in here for academics, for 7th and 8th graders, rising 7th and 8th graders, in order for us to prepare the students for the high school programs. With the medical program, the program at Norview, the leadership program, and the IB program, they've all asked that students have minimum requirements. So those are in there for 7th and 8th grade in the first year. And then you'll see the language in there for the existing Lafayette students that were promised that they would have an opportunity to apply for the school and get a weighted credit on their application. And so those students would actually be rising 8th graders. So we wanted to make sure that that was, that language was in there. And so I gave you a copy of this as well, to give you an understanding of how the enrollment will be implemented. So we are expecting to open up with 650 students in September. So how this would roll in is that in the first year, we will take students at all grade levels between 3rd through 8th grade, and you'll see that there's numbers that have been set there, and there's a particular reason why you have those numbers. And you'll also see a line, a black line that runs down the middle. Because the IB program requires a continuum, that the students have to take 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, unfortunately, the IB program would not be able to be offered to the students who are coming there as 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. However, the teachers that they have will be trained in IB, and so it will be incorporated. They will not technically be true IB students because the program will not allow it. And so your elementary school grades are actually the ones that will end up being eligible to have the phased-in IB approach. Starting with the 5th grade class that will be at the school, their first year as middle schoolers, 6th graders, they can be part of the IB program. And so we have carefully placed this enrollment to show you why our 4th and 5th grade are smaller, is because you want to be able, after the first year, your two entry points are your 3rd and 6th grade year. You don't have entry points in other years. So we'll have 100 slots for 3rd graders, but for 6th grade, we want to make it open for other students to apply. So 75 students will then be able to apply and come to the school either as an IB student or as part of the project-based learning school. And then you can see how this gets phased in, and how we grow our enrollment to be at 750. Also, for those of you who are interested in athletics, by having 400 middle school students the first year, this does allow us to have an athletic program. Maybe not for football initially, but you'll see once we hit the 700 and 750, we are growing our middle school program, that we can have a full athletic program, which is a desire for many of our parents. Okay, and I'll stop right there if there are any questions about the enrollment. Yes, okay, okay. Yes.
How do you handle attrition? You know, we have military families that get transferred, people move away, people, how are you going to handle that? Because your numbers will drop.
Sure, and we've talked about actually holding five slots for military families at each grade levels, and as well as there will be a waiting list similar to Rosemont and Gint and other programs, that when an opening happens, we can call that student to come to the school and enroll.
Can I ask a question about football?
Sure.
Not about football, about sports itself, because our other K-8 programs don't have the full athletic program.
So the numbers, the magic number is 450 middle school students. Rosemont does not, I think they have 325, I want to say.
Yeah, because, because this school will have the lower grades, then they can put the numbers at the upper grades, because they don't have to accommodate for that K-3, too.
Okay, I just, I'm thinking about equity. I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position.
Sure, absolutely.
Once a student is accepted into the school, will his continuation in the school be unconditional? I mean, in other words, is there, at any point, can that student, would, if his grade point average drops or anything like that?
Not for grades, but for behavior that could be a reason to send a student back to a school. But that is one thing that will be worked out as the program continues to grow.
But that would be like we have at all of our other schools. So if there are acts that are done that would allow for that student to have to go to the tribunal, then it would be discussed at that point what the sanction would be. So that's like for any other school in the district.
Yeah, it's part of a-
Nothing different here.
Right, part of the compact with that, and also since transportation's being provided for the students district-wide, school-wide. But that is something that we can note as we continue with the process.
Make sure I'm clear, so you're saying that if there's a issue like that, the child goes back to their zone school, is that what you mean?
Well, we can't make that determination. If there's a discipline act that is committed, then it would go through People Personnel Services, and they would make the determination at that point.
Now, I was just looking for clarity from what Mr. Smead said, that-
Right, all the students that are there are there on out-of-district permits, so that they follow the guidelines of Student Support Services and-
Well, I guess that's where my confusion is, because if it's, if it's an academy or a special program like Gramby's IB, I understand that, but this school is going to be an open enrollment school, correct? So there's no place to go back home to, that's your school, if I'm understanding the process correctly.
Well, there is, because they are, they are, those students live in the city of Norfolk and are assigned a regular elementary, middle school. This, they're applying to come to this school separate from whatever school they would normally go to, doesn't have its own district.
So are their scores going to count at the new school, or are their scores going back to the home school?
They come, they count at the school. Dr. Savigny?
That's correct. It will be a school, not a program.
I'd like to get some further understanding of that as we move forward.
Would you be happy to add to that? The committee is in the process of discussion, and those are the kinds of items that need to be placed on the table.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Because this is a new and different school. It's not a program. It's a repurposed school.
Right.
So there are some nuances that the committee would need to place on the table about that, and, you know, to ensure that what we do is appropriate for the decision-making. And so while the committee's in the initial stages, I would just recommend that you take a look at that to make sure that what we are doing is right for the process and challenge.
Yeah, just to make sure our policy lines up with it. I don't, to my knowledge, if we did that at Gint, and I wasn't aware of it, but I think if that's a policy that we undertake with our open enrollment schools, it's something we should look at.
And we'll continue doing research on that. It will be part of the compact that ends up being designed. Just to give you, to-
Sorry.
I've got some comments, but I can save them to the end.
Okay. Just to give you a timeline, and you kind of saw this diagram last time, you'll see that we are moving actually a lot quicker than what we thought we were going to move. But we are actually in part of Phase 5, which was the student application process, and like I said, I'll explain later. There will be a student selection process, this is a district-wide process. So in February, all of the specialty programs will be accepting students into their programs, into their schools, and so this is a new procedure. We will be working on the hiring of the staff for the school during the winter time and early spring, and then the professional development aspects of this for us to open in September. I wanted to talk to you about a few of our challenges. The first challenge was that the district did decide to have a common application process-
Would not be a barrier for students to come to the school. But we also wanted to have some items that would show that we have committed students and families that want to come to this school and be part of this change and this transformation. There is a general application process. The student has to be in good standing at their current school. And student and parents will review and sign a compact. This is a new item that you'll see in schools. The teacher, the student, the parent, and the principal sign a compact, and that will be designed by the committee as well. We're asking for a character reference. And the character reference can come from anybody that's a non-relative. We've noticed in the past that that has been a barrier for students and programs. And so it could be a church leader, it could be a teacher, it could be a Boy Scout leader that just would check off a character reference for the student. And we asked for a short essay on why I want to come to this school, to be written by the student. We also want to make sure that they understand that if we exceed our enrollment, that we would have to go to a lottery system. Now, the sixth through eighth grade has all of the same requirements except we will have an interview process. And then you'll see that there's language in here for academics and for seventh and eighth graders, rising seventh and eighth graders, in order for us to prepare the students for the high school programs. With the medical program, the program at Norview, the leadership program, and the IB program, they've all asked that students have minimum requirements. So those are in there for seventh and eighth grade in the first year. And then you'll see the language in there for the existing Lafayette students that were promised that they would have an opportunity to apply for the school and get weighted credit on their application. And so those students would actually be rising eighth graders. So we wanted to make sure that that was, that language was in there. And so I gave you a copy of this as well to give you an understanding of how the enrollment will be implemented. So we are expecting to open up with 650 students in September. So how this would roll in is that in the first year, we will take students at all grade levels between third through eighth grade. And you'll see that there's numbers that have been set there. And there's a particular reason why you have those numbers. And you'll also see a line, a black line that runs down the middle. Because the IB program requires a continuum that the students have to take sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, unfortunately, the IB program would not be able to be offered to the students who are coming there as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. However, the teachers that they have will be trained in IB, and so it will be incorporated. They will not technically be true IB students because the program will not allow it. And so your elementary school grades are actually the ones that will end up being eligible to have the phased-in IB approach. Starting with the fifth grade class that will be at the school, their first year as middle schoolers, sixth graders, they can be part of the IB program. And so we have carefully placed this enrollment to show you why our fourth and fifth grade are smaller. It's because you want to be able, after the first year, your two entry points are your third and sixth grade year. You don't have entry points in other years. So we'll have 100 slots for third graders. But for sixth grade, we want to make it open for other students to apply. So 75 students will then be able to apply and come to the school either as an IB student or as part of the project-based learning school. And then you can see how this gets phased in and how we grow our enrollment to be at 750. Also, for those of you who are interested in athletics, by having 400 middle school students the first year, this does allow us to have an athletic program. Maybe not for football initially, but you'll see once we hit the 700 and 750, we are growing our middle school program that we can have a full athletic program, which is a desire for many of our parents. Okay, and I'll stop right there if there are any questions about the enrollment. Yes, okay, okay. Yes.
How do you handle attrition? You know, we have military families that get transferred, people move away, people... How are you going to handle that? Because your numbers will drop.
Sure. And we've talked about actually holding five slots for military families at each grade levels. And as well as there will be a waiting list similar to Rosemont and Ginn and other programs, that when an opening happens, we can call that student to come to the school and enroll.
Can I ask a question about football?
Sure.
Not about football, about sports itself. Because our other K8 programs don't have the full athletic program.
So the numbers, the magic number is 450 middle school students. Rosemont does not, I think they have 325, I want to say.
Because this school will have the lower grades, then they can put the numbers at the upper grades because they don't have the accommodate for that K through two.
Okay. I'm thinking about equity. I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position.
Sure, absolutely.
Once a student is accepted into the school, will his continuation in the school be unconditional? I mean, in other words, is there, at any point, can that student... Would, if his grade point average drops or anything like that?
Not for grades, but for behavior that could be a reason to send a student back to a school. But that is one thing that will be worked out as the program continues to grow.
But that would be like we have at all of our other schools. So if there are acts that are done that would allow for that student to have to go to the tribunal, then it would be discussed at that point what the sanction would be. So that's like for any other school in the district.
Yeah, it's part of a...
There'd be nothing different here.
Right, part of the compact with that. And also since transportation's being provided for the students district-wide, school-wide. But that is something that we can note as we continue with the process.
Make sure I'm clear. So you're saying that if there's a issue like that, that the child goes back to their zone school? Is that what you mean?
Well, we can't make that determination. If there's a discipline act that is committed, then it would go through People Personnel Services, and they would make the determination at that point.
Now, I was just looking for clarity from what Mr. Snead said.
Okay.
Right, all the students that are there are there on out-of-district permits. So that they follow the guidelines of Student Support Services and...
Well, I guess that's where my confusion is. Because if it's, if it's an academy or a special program like Gramby's IB, I understand that. But this school is going to be an open enrollment school, correct? So there's no place to go back home to that's your school, if I'm understanding the process correctly.
Well, there is because they are, they are... Those students live in the city of Norfolk and are assigned a regular elementary, middle school. This, they're applying to come to this school separate from whatever school they would normally go to. It doesn't have its own district.
So are their scores going to count at the new school? Or are the scores come out to the home school?
They come, they count at the school. Dr. Sevigny?
That's correct. It will be a school, not a program.
I'd like to get some further understanding of that as we move forward.
But you may add to that. The committee is in the process of discussion, and those are the kinds of items that need to be placed on the table.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Because this is a new and different school. It's not a program. It's a repurposed school.
Right.
So there are some nuances that the committee would need to place on the table about that. And, you know, to ensure that what we do is appropriate for the decision-making. And so while the committee's in the initial stages, I would just recommend that you take a look at that to make sure that what we are doing is right for the process and challenge.
Yeah, just to make sure our policy lines up with it. I don't, to my knowledge, if we did that at Ginn, and I wasn't aware of it. But I think if that's a policy that we undertake with our open enrollment schools, it's something we should look at.
And we'll continue doing research on that. It will be part of the compact that ends up being designed. Just to give you, to... Sorry.
It's not, I've got some comments, but I can save them to the end.
Okay. Just to give you a timeline, and you kind of saw this diagram last time, you'll see that we are moving actually a lot quicker than what we thought we were going to move. But we are actually in part of Phase Five, which was the student application process. And like I said, I'll explain later. There will be a student selection process. This is a district-wide process. So in February, all of the specialty programs will be accepting students into their programs, into their schools. And so this is a new procedure. We will be working on the hiring of the staff for the school during the winter time and early spring. And then the professional development aspects of this for us to open in September. I wanted to talk to you about a few of our challenges. The first challenge was that the district did decide to have a common application process. And the timeline originally did not meet our timeline because we were not supposed to be at the phase that we're at right now. And so actually tomorrow night is the district showcase for the specialty programs. So we had to be ready for this. And as well as the applications going out December 1st. So originally, we were going to do this in December. This has impacted us in other ways as well, including the naming of the building. And some people may disagree, but the committee felt that right now it hurts us marketing-wise to go out to the public without a name on the building. And so we know that the school board is looking at the policy, and we're hopeful that you will continue to work on this to the point that we can get this out to the public so that we can get a name on the building.
So if I could, let's just take a little time out there. When is it that you think you need a name?
Now. Yesterday. The applications are going out December 1st. And as I said, tomorrow, I'm standing up in front of prospective parents talking about an MPS, third through eighth grade choice specialty school. It doesn't, anybody who's ever been involved in marketing, that doesn't create a vibe. The program's great that we're going to have there. I could talk to them blue in the face. But people like those tangible-type names, and we don't have it, so...
So what I would recommend as a board is we revise our, or review our policies and/or regulations in terms of how we implement some of our policies. Let's today...
Yes, that's right.
Right, but there's no definite dates relative to this particular school in terms of when we would hold, for instance, the open house or the community conversation about it. And I'd like to really get those dates today done or identified so that we can move forward, should we move forward on the policy.
Right, I want to get an answer. We are recommending a policy.
Right.
And what we said we would do at the last session, we're leaving that up to the administration to address the date. So we didn't feel it's our, that it's ours or the board's responsibility to set the dates. We felt it's our responsibility to set the policy. The administration gave us the regulations. And then as they go forward with implementation, that's for them to address however it is that they think makes sense. We intentionally did not try to get too specific because it applies, you know, across the board.
I would just suggest that this school might be a bit of an exception in terms of we need to move on this a little bit sooner than later. So I'm going to press on this, that we definitely move on this sooner than later.
When we discuss...
I'm sorry, Warren?
Well, let me, let me say this. So I can appreciate the pressure and the urgency of this matter. So we have the policy on the agenda tonight. We know we're going to vote on it on next Wednesday. And so I'll chat with the superintendent so that we do keep it where it should be with the administration, but certainly recognize the urgency of the matter and so we can roll out the dates fairly quickly.
Saying in principle, we might confirm or affirm or indicate how we're headed.
But tonight, we'll pretty much...
We'll push the policy.
Yeah, exactly.
Great, thanks. And just for some fun, we've chosen a mascot. We chose the eagle. And the reason we chose the eagle was it's symbolic to how our school is transforming. The eagles, as you know, were going to be extinct. And with some policy changes and some innovative approaches, the eagle has rebounded to the point that it is no longer actually an endangered species. And so a little bit symbol there. Also, they used to be the rockets. And there was another middle school that was the rockets. So, yeah, so we thought we had to get away from that. We also chose the school colors of red, white, and blue. And the reason why that's symbolic is because in our promise is that we are preparing the students for high school, the high school programs. And so each one of those colors is actually in one of the high schools in the city. And so you can see Lake Taylor High School and Norview High School and how that connects. So we had a little bit of fun with that. We just, I'm sorry? Yes, yeah. That's right. And as I said, we just, we just need a name. And I'll tell you that the SPMT is very supportive of using the word discovery somewhere in the name of the building. Academy for Discovery or something like that. They, as either a sub-headline, because that's what this is about. It's giving the kids the freedom to discover at the school, so. We have been doing our ongoing evaluation needs. I'll tell you, I have to give a shout out to Rex Gay. The painters are there giving us a new fresh coat of paint, which was needed, fixing some of our maintenance issues. But we, as many of you know, that Lafayette had a lot of damaged furniture from some flooding that happened. Also, we were told to dispose of some furniture that was there that had issues. We also gave out the majority of our furniture to other schools where the students that were at Lafayette went. And I just gave my last 120 student desk to Maury High School that had a need. And so we do have a need for furniture. I've been working with the furniture contract company, a furniture company that we have a contract with that actually sets this. And they've given us an estimate of about 12,000 to 16,000 per classroom. This is your traditional classroom. And what's interesting is if you talk to the furniture guys, this is where schools are going. And so I put some furniture up that shows that we are moving to project-based learning furniture. It's all about collaboration and kids working together. And one thing unique there, you'll see you're, they don't, there's no traditional desk there. And so the committee fell in love with this. And as we move forward with the budget items, it's not actually any more expensive than your regular classroom furniture. So we are looking at this type of model for it. And I'll let you know that the furniture company is also working with our five new schools. And they are possibly going to recommend this furniture for the new schools as well because it is the new way of learning. 21st century learning. So as I said, we have identified needs. We are asking for some urgency with the budget implications. There's a picture of one of my empty classrooms that I have in the building. We do have that estimate of 650,000. Rex Gay is putting together a CIP budget for things like the marquee needs to be changed out and the naming of the build, sign of the building, and some other small maintenance issues. We're asking you once again about the quick approval for the naming of the building. And then we've asked for, we are working for, looking for a budget for an office manager to assist me with on that, so. Any other questions?
It didn't, I didn't lose the point with the red, white, and blue and the eagle. You know we have eagles in our community now.
Yes.
I have a point for consideration. I have a question with a big request, probably the requests of Dr. King and Dr. Charbonne, and a two-hats soliloquy. Consideration, the word problems. They're project-based, but as you speak with the community just this week, using, adding the word problems or in parentheses or in the slash, the reason why, I can see many of our partners or community members bringing a problem to us. And you know, based on where you have been as an assistant principal the past few years, there's an organization that has had their state fair, state competition, right here. So as you describe project, many folks might see that as foggy. But when you start saying they're solving real problems, problems that may be relevant to local firms, small, whatever, just a suggestion. That's a consideration. The question, would you please put up your vine or your tree? You have a timeline.
Yes.
You have things that you're going to do.
Yes.
The request is of Dr. King, through Dr. Charbonne to Dr. King. We have to meet this need. To me, this is a foggy vision of three years ago for me. And this is coming true, and this is wonderful. Better than I ever thought it would be. Since Dr. King has been here and since you're working on this, this is, this is a dream come true. But I'd like to know that we're meeting the steps, not just the big, big steps, but the little steps. So if you could use verb and noun, like "school painted," "desks arrived," I would like a monthly report.
Yes.
Simple, not presented at a school board, in writing, through Dr. Charbonne to Dr. King for us so that we know that you're getting what you need, not just in time delivery, but in advance of time.
Okay.
And I would like that because I want to make sure that we're doing all weekend to clear the way to make this foggy dream just get clearer and clearer. And now for, if that's possible, and it's really a question of Dr. King, if that's possible to go through Dr. Charbonne to give that to us monthly. Now for the two hats thing. I love what City Council does. And with your one hat on, thank you. It was really great to read in the newspaper, where I get a lot of my important information, that Open Campus, Open Campus and Maury gets some money in a supplemental appropriation. And we know supplemental appropriation is important. But I think with 700, 600 to 700 students here, and I think it's important that we, when we finally get the opportunity to decide how that money's going to be spent, because I know your colleagues know that we decide on how any supplemental appropriation's going to get spent. And so when we finally get to decide on how that money's spent, I want to make sure that we consider your tree and the steps that you're talking about. And so since you have two hats on, I don't want you to comment because one hat may get in the way of the other, but...
I'm here as principal today.
I understand that. So as principal, I just want to make sure that these steps are communicated to us that, and that we know you're not just in time delivery and that we know we're in advance of things. And that when we consider that supplement or any other, that we're considering the resources that you need. And again, this is a foggy dream of mine from three years ago, and thanks for helping it come true.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Yes. Speak to me a little bit about the teacher application process and what type of teachers you're going to be pursuing.
I don't have an answer for you because that's the next phase. So the committee will be held, will be run chaired by, I don't know if Sonia Hales here, but from, we have a human resources liaison. So she'll be leading a committee, a subcommittee of SPMT members that actually will determine how that will go out. There will be an internal and external application process for this, but so that teachers will have the opportunity to apply to the school internally. But we also want to look at candidates from outside of the school district as well. But that will be something that will be determined by the committee. And it will be probably earlier than the normal transfer process because of the sticking points with the new school opening and getting the training required for them. They will have to know when they're applying that they will be required to go to PBL training as well as IB training. And we'll have those dates on the application ready for them so they know I'm signing up for this.
Has project-based learning been done in all four public schools? I know that there's been no school that has adopted a whole program, but has that...
As far as I know, the concepts of project-based learning have been, have been in our schools. But it probably hasn't been implemented with fidelity. And I think that's the key to this, is that you have a program that if it's done correctly, it works. And it's easy for somebody to just say, "We're doing a project in a classroom. We're getting the kids together." But there's a role that the teacher has to play in all this. And I don't believe that our teachers have been trained on that role, how to be facilitators. And so this would be different than probably what you would normally see as a project-based type lesson.
Yes, okay. Just a couple of more questions. You know, I'm convinced that this type of learning works well. I know in Canada, it's used quite a bit. But I was wondering how that works for the higher-level math? How is, how is project-based learning implemented that way? Can you explain to us how?
Sure. It's not necessarily, okay. So it's all in the style of how the lesson is delivered. They're still learning the same concepts that they would normally learn in the higher-level math. But it's putting it back on the student by having them be the ones that are driving the process. So they're developing a set of questions. And the teacher then acts as a facilitator where they're working together and doing the research on solving the problems. The teacher's still giving the guidance of it, but they're not just sitting there and giving a direct instruction of a 20, 25-minute lecture. And then the students are working on a worksheet or they're working in groups. The students are actually designing and developing how this is going to end up happening and then to a final presentation. It's part of the training that the teacher will end up going through with this. But it's, it is a style, it's a change of style of teaching. And so when you go back to the teachers that are applying for the school, they have to know that they're going to be teaching in that style. There's, we've also looked at flipping the classroom as part of this. And that will be our technology committee. Actually, Andrea Sikora is going to be chairing our technology committee. And she will be looking at things like bring your own device to school and those types of programs. So she'll have a committee so that we can support eliminating some of the barriers that we have, such as the lecturing and the delivery of instruction and having the students be able to do that.
Just one last question.
You're running out of time.
Will this school be implementing the PBIS system?
Yes, absolutely. We'll follow the same. And I do want to apologize to the length of the presentation, but you do realize this is about three presentations in one because we're way ahead of, we're supposed to be, so.
So just quickly, I guess you touched on budget earlier, and you touched on a potential policy need.
Yes.
So I would just ask, you know, Ed and Rodney, as our policy board members, and Dr. Birdsong, if there are any policy needs that are identified as a result of the development of a school, then we clearly need to help facilitate that as well, given our role. Say that again? There you go. Good, thank you.
Pretty good.
It's mostly the Dr. King and Dr. Sevigny. The PBL-style learning is actually what we're trying to move the whole district to, correct? Getting away from the sit-and-get is what I heard it once referred to, as more as the teacher is the facilitator. I think this is a great, taking us to the next level. Sounds good.
We look at it as an opportunity to, the partner with Old Dominion University, they're looking for a training ground for future teachers when it comes to STEM and project-based learning, so.
We're very interested in that and what Tommy, and we're really happy to be at the table, and we want to help. This is a great idea, what you all are doing here, Old Dominion. We're at the College of Education. We're happy to be at the table. We're really here to support as much as we can.
So now two quick comments. Not only do we have ODU at the table with us, but we have some very key community business partners with us as well, especially in the CTE arena. And they are super excited about the possibility of, or just starting this PBL instruction. So as Tommy alluded to, as soon as they saw the video, they were just enthusiastic about the potential of where it will lead us to and potentially be a feeder pattern for the CTE High School. The second point is that our parents that are on the committee, myself included, when we heard that there was going to be ongoing training, coaching for the teachers and not just a one-time professional development seminar, that really got them excited as well. So this is very unique, that this, this whole approach with the unique learning style, the ongoing coaching. So just, I'm very excited about it. And I know it's going to be a wonderful learning environment for the kids.
I'm confident that that same kind of ongoing coaching would take place beyond that school for teachers throughout the district. That's, that's really important. But thank you. Great, great presentation, and it's an exciting, very exciting endeavor in the school. Thank you.
Just not related to this, but just something that they touched on that we've described before. I heard they focused on teens, STEAM. We've had a lot of conversations around Camp Estella and being the best STEM school in the state slash country. And world, I'll accept that. Keep going. I'll go universe. I'll go one, one more. But I think that the level of quality that we just received in this presentation, I'd like to hear us do with Camp Estella and also come back and revisit the concern that we've had with, since, since the former Lafayette Winona School is going to be out of the chute first, what potential impact it's going to have on what we're talking about doing at Camp Estella and its ability to also have a diverse student population. So I think we really need to drill down on that and make sure that we are having the same level of uniqueness and excellence there that what I'm hearing at the former Lafayette Winona School.
That's right.
And just for the board's information, the first task force for the Camp Estella school will take place on January 8th. So we've got that started so that this whole process will roll out for Camp Estella as well. process will roll out for Camp Estella as well.
Sure. Just to tell you too, Dr. Ambrose and I have had discussions, she's been over at the school, and we've sat down and talked about those issues. And she is actually looking at us to help with some of the partnerships that we form. So, and we, we want to do that because we see this growing, and it's not just about our school, so.
You know, that, and that in some ways could help the Camp Estella School because we show success at the former Lafayette Winona Middle School. And parents get excited about that, and then maybe they can't get into that school. Then we still have, there's, there's not a lack of need or a lack of talent that could fill those schools, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
We have one more presentation under transformation. Yes, reconfiguration?
Yes. They're coming up now.
All right.
Poplar Hall and Fairlawn with us to talk about the transformation model and the reconfiguration of K, pre-K two and three five.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. We heard from PB Young and Southwood Park, I believe it was last month.
Yes, we did.
So now we get our other two reconfigured schools. That's great.
And they will introduce their members. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're excited about being here, and we want to welcome you to Avid Nation. And you'll see that you are combining the Tigers and the Lions. I am Michelle Logan. I am principal at Fairlawn Elementary School, and I have with me Monica Lewis, and she is our reading specialist, and also was one of the teachers trained this summer in Avid. At our school, we have roughly eighteen classroom teachers, nine resource teachers. And of the eighteen, eleven of these teachers are combined from Fairlawn and Poplar Hall. One teacher we were able to get from the transfer list in the district, and seven new teachers.
Good evening. I am Cassandra Duke-Washington, principal of Poplar Hall's Elementary, and I have with me today Addis Sutton, an expert kindergarten teacher. Hi. Poplar Hall's has approximately three hundred and sixty students, pre-K four through grade two. We have nineteen teachers. Eighteen of the nineteen are combined teachers from Poplar Hall's and Fairlawn. We have one new teacher that was acquired through a district transfer. We have had summer meetings, meeting greets, and open house was held at both schools to bring communities together. We've introduced a transformation initiative, leadership, and Avid, which brings us to the mission of Avid Nation, to have a direct focus on creating a connection to college readiness, equity, and rigorous opportunities for students in pre-K four through grade five. We will faithfully implement, refine, and expand our instructional system to promote advancement via individual determination.
You heard that. Avid, advancement via individual determination. Our students know that they are the individuals who determine whether they will be successful students in college, for college and career readiness. We will look today at reconfiguration, educational impact, professional development, where we are now, and then we will provide a summary.
We are extremely excited about the advantages of our reconfiguration. We have established age and developmentally appropriate boundaries and expectations that build strong youth-oriented relationships towards a commitment of learning, setting the tone of clear rules, consequences, and monitoring academic, social, emotional, and physical behaviors that may affect the learning process. We were able to promote strong social expectations and related competencies, which includes planning and decision-making, interpersonal, cultural, and resistance skills that leads to PBIS, which we are able to target issues of bullying. We have also, we are also planning joint staff meetings to reinforce asset building, which is developing the entire learning community, business partners, students, parents, faculty, and staff. We, we have, the configuration allowed us to base our decisions on the needs, particularly to the learning community, which will include strategies that seek to correct problems as well as keep them from reoccurring.
The educational impact, we know is very important. So we looked at the deepening of the retention of content and the depth of knowledge. Students are learning how to learn, transitioning from learning to read to reading to learn, while developing the habits of the mind. We infuse the staff with consistent strategy instruction by focusing on what we need to fix, start, stop, and keep to promote organizational and systematic explicit instruction. We establish an enriching, motivating, empowering environment that support academic weaknesses identified in the early years by learn, of learning, and have an effect on the upper elementary level of cognitive process. And four, developing a common language of articulation, collaboration, I'm sorry, calibration, assessment, and accountability, in which all students develop a growth mindset toward learning on the primary as well as the upper elementary level. Two, strengthen transitions across the feeder patterns from Poplar Hall and Fairlawn to Lake Tele Middle and Booker T. Washington High Schools.
The Avid college readiness system is composed of what we have a WICARized Lesson. That framework includes components of writing to learn, inquiry, collaboration, organization, reading to learn, student success skills, and partnerships. There are specific instructional strategies that we have, that we are going to base the instructional program on. It involves ICAN statements, using graphic organizers, note-taking, SQ5R, a direct focus on twelve reading comprehension skills, and the Singapore Math Model Drawing. Presently, there have been seven teachers trained for Avid. We are going to implement Train the Trainer Model. And as of now, we are in the first phase of the certification process. We do have site priorities that have been established, and we have also engaged parents, staff, community, and business partners in this, in the process of strategic planning to articulate Avid to all stakeholders. The professional development and collaboration involves implementing a developmental relationship framework. This includes our Avid trainers, our executive director, administrators, and instructional support staff, change agents. We all met to collaborate about the organization and the design, the methods and the first steps of implementation of the Avid Elementary Program. Teachers will consistently be guided through a process of how to generate stronger students and instructional practices through development of a consistent way to think and process information.
Where are we now? Well, we are creating a continuous system that progresses through targeted professional development to establish an effective, efficient, and thorough focus on improvement. We are looking at Core Plus Planning, which allows teachers to have additional planning, and students to receive acceleration or enrichment response to intervention practices. Building upon the system for, of looking at PBIS lessons, and then beginning in the second semester, we are going to have our fifth grade students take an elective during that Core Plus Planning time to ensure that they are ready for the elective classes that they will receive in the middle school level. They will be taking a look at note-taking, time management, and goal-setting. We are building a learning community to create norms and developing plans for shared leadership and responsibility. As we summarize, we say that we are going to facilitate community ownership and diverse broad input from all stakeholders. We want to foster a design of positive asset development. We want to analyze data in numerous ways and by different populations to drive decision-making. And last, continue to form, implement, monitor, evaluate, and adjust new action plans related to the transformation initiative. And I'd like to invite you to visit Poplar Hall's and Fairlawn. Early in October, the Avid National Team came to Norfolk and visited these two schools. They were so impressed with how these schools are implementing the Avid Elementary Model, that they are really looking at our schools being part of the Avid showcase. And I don't know if you realize how big a deal that is, but these schools are national models for Avid throughout the United States. I must say, I worked with them through the summer and went to the planning in Philadelphia with these fabulous teachers. And I was actually blown away when I walked into Poplar Hall's and Fairlawn and saw how they had transformed the school and truly embraced the Avid philosophy and the Avid model. So they're doing a fantastic job, and I invite all of you to visit these schools to see what they're doing with Avid.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yes. Right. We, we talked about the transformational model. Parent compacts were an essential action item for each school. Have, do you guys use those yet, or is that?
Yes, the parent compacts went home with our parent packets at the beginning of the year, that they had to sign off on.
Are they coming back?
Yes.
Sign?
Good.
I have a similar question about whether the parents actually understand this.
I'm excited for you to say that because we are having, and have, have already begun having our parent workshops. We've had two so far. The parents were very interested because they really did not understand what the Avid process was. And maybe at a later date, we can share with you the PowerPoint that we did with the parents, because now they have a better understanding of exactly what their student, they did not know that this was a philosophy that their students go through to prepare them for college and career readiness, strategies, and, and activities.
We, we might need to see the same PowerPoint.
Certainly. On the lower level, what parents are experiencing is the organization piece of it, because we have, the students' notebooks are color-coded. Red is for math, green is for social studies, and so on. They have color-coded notebooks, they have color-coded folder, folders. So they're actually learning to become organized. And at first, they did not believe that it could happen on a lower level, but it is actually being implemented, as well as teaching the younger children how to do two-column note-taking, and to do graphic organizers. And all of that is happening from pre-K four all the way through two. So when you walk through the hallways, there's evidence that it, this is taking place. The Avid visitors were trying to compare the work between pre-K and two. They really couldn't figure out, they said, well, we're going to take pictures and see if anyone can distinguish the difference. And you actually can't. It's just the implementation and how we do things, and how we have modified according to the age appropriateness and the developmental levels.
Yeah, and I'd like to state that we went through training for one year prior to implementing this. And I had to have an extensive amount of training to be able to manage the programs in these schools, because Avid is very specific, it's very deliberate, and you really have to follow the script in order to reap the benefits that the principals and the teachers are stating here. And these things are being done in the school in a very deliberate fashion, so that the students can benefit from what Avid has to offer.
And I think it would be important to, although you've, you've, the team has really done a good job of pinpointing for the board and the public, it is important, I think, to reiterate what this means as we travel the path for increasing the percentage of students meeting and exceeding, and exceeding standards as relates to the SOL and the high-stakes assessment. Although I know that's one assessment, however, at the end of the day, that's what we're looking to see improved student performance. So can you just briefly touch on, without going back through the pieces, because that's what, what it really means, but what that means in terms of implications for improvement?
Certainly. On our level, we're actually setting the foundation for them, because in looking at, looking back at what we've done in the past, we know that the students were not organized. They were not used to note-taking. We also know that if you start children at an early age with a system and a organized way of doing things, that will continue with them. So by starting them at the beginning level, they understand they need a notebook. They understand you have a specific notebook to take specific notes. So that is a very rigorous organization pattern and system for children on the early levels. Plus, we also looked at where their deficits were, what are their challenges, what are the barriers, what are the weaknesses, and what are the strengths. And when we look at those things, then we can create something to put in place. Therefore, when they leave us at the beginning on the lower level, and they go to the upper level elementary, those things were all, the basics are in place, and they're in place strong. It is a mindset. So she won't have to worry about that. They're already be ready. When she gets there, all she has to do is continue, and they will be reading when they get to her, and comprehending.
And as Cassandra is saying, it, it allows us to focus. She can focus on the early grades. We can focus on those students at upper elementary. We can look at those standards. We can break that down by looking at the things that are needed for the older students to be able to meet the success. We have longer periods of time to be able to plan. We have longer periods, we have that plus a Core Plus. So while the teachers benefit from the planning, the students also benefit with having additional work to either be accelerated because there's something that they need to do, or enriched, so that they can continue to bridge higher.
Thank you. And I'm glad you could tee that up for you, because I think that's really important, not only for us to understand, but for our stakeholders, and more importantly, the parents to understand. So I'm glad you're having those parent workshops, so the folks understand that this is not just about reconfiguring grades, but that there is a quote-unquote method to the madness, a scientific approach to this all. And, and the transition piece for the fifth grade is so important as they prepare for, for middle school. So thank you all for excellent presentation. Juan?
I knew you had this exciting development going on. And so although I've visited most elementary schools, is it time to visit you now? I'll call you tomorrow. I'll call you tomorrow to set up a post-Thanksgiving visit. Instead of just reading, this time you got to take me around.
Well, thank you.
She could be enrolled in that Avid program.
Awesome.
The color-coded notebooks would be a good idea for you, man. The color-coded notebooks.
I tell you, the color-coded notebooks, it was so exciting to walk in the school and see the same color in every single classroom for every subject. It's really exciting.
And we thought that was a good start, so they all come up knowing that those are the colors that will be used for the upper elementary.
I still use my color very much.
You all have a parent advisory committee?
Yes.
Okay. And you all get feedback from them, and you're responsive to them, their concerns, any, any needs that they have as far as the transition between pre-K years, elementary years, into the, I guess, grades three through five?
A lot of that is taking place during A lot of that is taking place during our strategic planning committee meetings because we do have parents, community partners, the staff, and they all sit together and they collaborate about those things frequently. As well as we want to, this year, we're kind of transitioning with something new into the PTA nights that they will be meeting really in the classrooms and we will be focusing on learning pieces and specific objectives so parents can get an understanding of what's going on and how to help their students and they can have a better collaboration with the teacher. So, and we also put up a parking lot as well. In case we don't get to cover everything, we do have the parents who put their notes on the parking lot in each classroom so that we can look at those notes. And when they come back for the next meeting, then we can discuss those concerns they may have.
Okay. And I guess this question is more directed towards Dr. King. You know, I've always am the advocate for surveys and getting data as far as when new concepts are introduced. And I can just sense the enthusiasm in their presentation. I would like to know, and I'm sure that many other board members might want to know this as well as well of the community, from the teachers and from the parents, if there is something that can be sent to them at the end of the year anonymously to get their feedback as to how they felt the school year went, if they felt that the training benefited them. And for the parents to say if they saw a difference in their students with their preparedness for school, their enthusiasm for school. Because I'm sure that they can give us just as much feedback that we can use for making the next school year even better. And anything that we can tweak to increase that enthusiasm, I would want to do that. And if they see something that can be changed or stopped or continued, as you had said in your presentation, to work on that. So feedback at the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you all. Great presentation.
Okay. Before we move on, we're going to take a quick break. All right. Let's try to be back in at least four to five minutes.
Seriously?
No.
Just testing you.